Welcome to this evening's Committee the Whole on Wednesday, September the 11th. This evening we have several items on our agenda, starting with Ordinance 19-18. That will be in regard to bonds by the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission. And here to present that item is Mr. Jeff Cockrell. And without further ado, if we could go ahead and get started. Thank you. It's a long way to that podium, isn't it? When you start from over there.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Cockrell. I am one of the Monroe County attorneys. And tonight I'm here representing the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission. There are three Redevelopment Commission members in the audience, so they're here to answer questions if you have any. Iris Kiesling, Ephraim Pfefferman, and Richard Martin. And I think tonight, maybe a little background is in order. Monroe County established what we call the West Side Tiff District in the early 90s. And then after that was established, the city annexed a portion of that district. The area we're talking about is essentially the shopping area where Lowe's is and some related other businesses there. So when that annexation occurred, whenever we do a Tiff bond, we come to the city council to make sure you guys are aware what we're doing and somewhat approve what we're doing. So in your packet you'll notice that we always get a letter from our financial advisor to make sure it doesn't have any impact on the city taxes, and you'll see that letter as well. In this case, you know, we currently have bonds that go until the Tiff District's extinguished. This doesn't lengthen the timeframe of the Tiff District, so really it has no impact on city revenues in that area. I think the most important thing, at least when I talk to the county commissioners and the county council, they really want to know, what are you going to do with this? Because this is a bond, and it's not to exceed $8 million. Really, we have two different road projects that are interrelated that we're trying to accomplish here. One is to extend Profile Parkway, which is the, which tees into Curry Pike, where the former GE current Cook site is, and extend that all the way to Gates Drive. And also to extend Sunrise Greeting Court to connect Vernal Pike to Gates Drive as well, to have a lot of interconnectivity in that area, as well as to open up the former ABB site for potential development. So those are kind of the two major projects. The big push for these, from our perspective, is to essentially give people a reason not to use Curry Pike and Third Street as much, to alleviate a lot of the traffic conditions that we're seeing out there. So those are kind of the big projects and what we're hoping to accomplish.
Thank you very much for giving us that overview. Are there any questions from council? Seeing no questions for any of the three who are on the RDC. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that these new streets will be complete streets, so they will also have pedestrian infrastructure and pay attention to non-vehicular modes of transportation.
I believe they are. And again, I can confirm that with our engineer, but I'm positive they are. The actual, the road that runs from Vernal to Gates Drive is actually, we're receiving over $7 million, or around $7 million in state and federal funding support. So we have to go through all the indot requirements for that project as well.
And joining Mr. Cockrell is Pfefferman. Did you have something you wanted to add to the initial presentation before we open up to more questions?
Sure, if I may, real quick. And thank you for considering this this evening. As Jeff mentioned, this is, these are projects that address connectivity, but they also address safety. Curry Pike is one of the most dangerous roads in the county, and we hope that this, you know, alleviates some of those issues out there. And then while I was up here, I also just thought I'd acknowledge, as the president of the county's Redevelopment Commission, that a lot of coordination between the city and the county staff and Redevelopment Commissions go, you know, happened day after day, especially with just something as simple as this, where parcels in a Tiff District are shared. So wanted to acknowledge the city administration and their staff, everyone from the, you know, Controller and Public Works, and Alex Crowley in Economic Development, and then the county staff with Mr. Cockrell and Lisa Ridge and her department really coordinate so well on these things, and just thought I'd take the opportunity to acknowledge that. So, thank you.
Great, that is good to hear. Any additional questions? Councilmember Volan.
Yes, Mr. Cockrell, just because indot says that it's a certain set of standards doesn't mean that they rise to a city's standards. I'm not necessarily sure that they would have it as a standard to put a sidewalk in, since they mostly build highways. Is there no local standard being applied to the street?
There is a standard being applied. I am not a highway engineer, and I'd be more than happy to get that. I know when looking at the bridge plans, as well as, there are walking paths, and I know the bridge is being designed with a path on one side so that pedestrians and bicyclists can safely traverse that.
Okay, so if you know for sure that there is some kind of pedestrian bicycle infrastructure added to the street, that's fine with me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Back here, so any additional questions? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Cockrell. I, not that you need it, I do support the project or your intentions of it, but I was thinking about any environmental impact study. Is that part of you guys' preparation? As you're going from Profile, you have to go across some land, too, and then back up to Vernal, so...
Well, clearly we're working with the current property owner on this, and there are environmental restrictions on that property due to its former use, and we are very aware of those, and we are being very sensitive to those. We are not going to violate any of the environmental constraints that are already there, as well as any that we would have as part of our planning process.
Okay. Do you guys do a study of some sort, or there's no need? There's already a study that...
This has gone through decades of study.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from council? Seeing none, we go to the public. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to speak, please take the podium, sign in, and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I can answer that question. The county has an urbanizing area plan that covers most especially the part of the Tiff District that the city annexed. And it says that the roads there should be 10 feet wide to slow down traffic, and it also says there should be sidewalks, and it says there should be connectivity, that there should be, you know, a road between Curry and the highway. And so it exactly supports this project, because it has, it's a year ago that I saw the design contract for it, but it had a five-foot sidewalk on one side, a 10-foot sidewalk on the other side, and severely substandard bike lane in addition. But I have a lot of concerns about that design, but it is miles ahead of the city end of Gates Drive. The city end of Gates Drive, I can't even express to you how badly it was engineered, but the simple fact that matters is it has sidewalks over almost all of it. But at the very end of it, where it meets Third Street, or Highway 48, or whatever you call it out there, because of I-69, they installed sidewalks along Third Street, but those sidewalks don't connect to the sidewalks on Gates. It takes about, it'll take about 200 feet of sidewalk on each side of the street to connect. And then there's just up Gates a little bit on one side, there's a sidewalk gap, just a regular sidewalk gap, 500 feet, really easy to do, just dig a ditch, fill it with gravel, and then put a concrete pad on it. But on the side of the street where Jacob's Drive is, that's the, it's like a curving street that goes into like Wendy's and White Castle and Michael's and all that crap, it's got a really challenging intersection for pedestrians. I can see why they didn't put sidewalks when they built that intersection. That intersection's actually really bad for drivers as well. It's basically, it's optimized for really big trucks, and that's the only thing it's good at. It's actually really bad for somebody trying to make like a left turn coming out of there. But it is impossible for pedestrians, and it has no sidewalks at the intersection itself. No marked crosswalk, where there's a island, like a pork chop, I've heard it called, like a little island. There's no sidewalks on that either. And if you want to do a good job on that, you're really going to have to reconfigure that intersection, and so that becomes like a half million or million-dollar project. And if you don't want to do a good job, just put the 100 feet of missing sidewalk, paint a crosswalk, and call it done. You know, when the county has a plan and they build a sidewalk, the city should have a sidewalk network for them to connect to. And we don't have a sidewalk network. If you get even a mile from the courthouse, every single sidewalk is three-quarters gap, with the single exception of West Third Street. That's a huge irony. And this isn't staff's fault, this is, you guys haven't put the money towards it. The Sidewalk Commission's budget is a joke. So now, it seems kind of ridiculous to say that we need sidewalks in such an unwalkable location. It really does everything it can to discourage walking. So this, I apologize for the subject matter, but this is straight from the newspaper. This was about a year ago. Police say man was masturbating in car 100 block of North Gates Drive, yada, yada. The officer noted the high pedestrian traffic in the area. So when it comes, you know, the officer standing there looking around, who has seen this public indecency, he sees pedestrians walking in the street there. And he knows there's pedestrian traffic there. It is a walkable area, because Highland Village is right there. You know, there's lots of housing right there. Stone Chase is even walking distance to this location. It's like a mile. It's nothing to walk, except that every piece of that experience is going to be miserable. And there's no sidewalks. People are walking in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment with respect to this project? All right, back to council for final comments before we move du pass. Thank you for signing in. Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to have a diagram of the planned improvement, but I need to go. I'll look for it myself. I'm sure that's in the packet or the county's thing, but otherwise, Mr. Alexander's words have made me look at the intersection of Third and the highway, and it is a disappointment, I have to say. Thank you.
So Member Chopra?
Yes, I'd just briefly like to thank the three Citizen Commission members, both for your hard work and for being here this evening. Those are, of course, the county's Redevelopment Commissioners who are here in the back and nodding their presence. It's always, it's always really neat to see the good work that can be done by people who are volunteering to do so, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
Call the question.
Thank you. We're ready for a move du pass, and is there a second for that?
Second.
Speak of the devil.
I will start on my right with Councilmember Chopra.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. And that passes eight zero. We do appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, next on our agenda, we're going to have a series of ordinances with regard to utilities questions. This next one is Ordinance 19-15. It's an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage works, revenue bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the city of Bloomington, Indiana sewage works, refunding revenue bonds of 2019 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. A lot of legal speak, and with us is Mr. Cock, Mr. Not who I expected. Hi, Mr. Underwood.
I go by many names. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. That's okay. I missed one meeting of this group, and I found out I got nominated to present, so I'll be brief. We do have representatives from utilities, from Legal Counsel Barnes and Thornburg, and our financial advisors, Otto Crowe, that are here to answer any questions you might have. But essentially, we're going to ask you to approve the refunding of three state revolving fund bonds. These are in the wastewater sewer department. Series 2004, series 2006, series B, and 2006, series C, a total of $7.686 million. Current interest rates are between 3.3 and 3.4 on the bonds. This will be down to just slightly over 2% if you approve it and we move forward. The savings is about $128,000 a year, or about $434,000 total. These will have the same maturities as they currently do. The 2004 matures in 2026, and the two series Bs and Cs mature in 2027. We would ask that you approve this so that utilities can save some money, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Any additional questions from council? Councilmember Sterbaum.
Does the savings include the cost of the bond lawyers?
Yes. This is the net savings.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it in the ordinance, which is huge. There's something about parity bonds. What is that? Like, we can also issue additional bonds?
Hi, Brad Bingham with Barnes and Thornburg. We service bond counsel. Parity bonds mean that there's other bonds outstanding that have an identical claim on the revenue source as the bonds which are being issued. And so I don't have it memorized, I may call on Buzz here, but what we're refunding are three separate series of outstanding bonds that were issued through SRF. There are other bonds which are currently outstanding, which we're not touching, and I think those were issued in 2012, 13, and 17?
Yes.
So these refunding bonds will be on a parity with the 2012s, 13s, and 17s, meaning they all, if there's ever a shortfall, I'm not saying there would be, but everybody would share equally in that, in that loss. You're kind of all on the same footing. That's what parity refers to.
Okay, so it's not like new bonds that we're issuing, it's just saying, these are additional bonds that are not being refinanced, and they are, if, you know, there's only so much money to go around, they're going to be on the same parity as the...
That's right. We defined them in this ordinance as outstanding parity bonds, meaning they're identical in rank to the bonds we're issuing now, but they're still out there on the same level.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions to my left? Councilmember Sims?
I don't know who, probably Jeff, but it's more of a statement, but I'll make it a question, since that's where it's supposed to be. It's fair to say that all the bonds that we're requesting, or you're proposing to refund and then reissue, are all the bonds that we could at this time, that were eligible to be done, so.
At this current time, we have just recently identified another series that has a potential for that, so we may be actually back later this year, early next year, on another refunding issue for the Utilities Department.
Okay, and as a council member on that board, I think the board unanimously supports this, and we're going to save a lot of money, and basically, why not? So I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Maybe.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm sorry, there's a, this is a huge ordinance, so I have to scroll through and see where my questions were. Oh, yeah, the sinking fund. So can you explain what that is again?
It's a debt service reserve fund. In the utility world, it's called a sinking fund. So essentially, you're required to fund a debt service reserve fund that's equal to one year's payment. So essentially, if there's a default on the bond, they know that at least the next year would be paid for. So that cash will get rolled into this, and it's a part of the net savings. So the 484 is after applying that, and then another debt service reserve fund will be created with the refunding.
So where does the money from the sinking fund come from?
It's in a, it's in a fund that's under the Utilities Department.
So is that also from ratepayers? Is that just something we set aside?
Well, it's from the, when you sell bonds, you fund a debt service reserve. So there's two ways to fund. You either fund it out of the bond sale, or you buy a surety bond. And in most cases, we just fund it with cash out of the bond.
Oh, I see, okay.
So essentially, you're, it's like when you rent. You know where you pay the first and last month's rent? So when you move out, you don't have to pay the last month's, because it's already there. This is essentially the same thing.
Like a security deposit.
Right. So it just goes, if you don't need it, it goes towards the last payment of the bond.
Got it, thank you.
All right, are there additional questions from council? Seeing none here, we go to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on the issue of bonds. And seeing none from the public, we are back to council for a final discussion. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I do remember, Mr. Underwood, conversations in the past, you know, akin to the surety bond. I just wanted to say that I'd never heard the sinking fund, and I think that's a very unfortunate name. Thank you.
That's why we call it a debt service reserve fund, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I just want to thank whoever had this idea, because it seems to be a good idea to save us quite a bit of money, so, good going.
I'll take credit for it.
Anyone else from council? All right, do we have a recommendation to move du pass?
Move du second.
Second.
All right, and I will start on my left this time, with Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
That's another eight zero pass. Thank you very much. And next up, we do have Ordinance 1916 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater Rate Adjustment. And we will have, I'm assuming, Mr. Kelson to present for the next couple of ordinances. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities. I have with me our Assistant Director for Engineering, Brad Schrader, our Assistant Director for Finance, Laura Pettit. Also with us are representatives from Crowe, who did the financial analysis around this item. That's Craig Lottz and Jennifer Wilson. I have a brief presentation regarding the sewer rate review that we've just completed, and the proposal that we're making regarding the sewer rates. In 2016, we did our last sewer rate increase. It was a 22% increase, and it was the first one in quite a long time. At the time, council asked us to bring rate requests more frequently, preferably on a three- or four-year cycle. And in doing that, we also are trying to make the cycles be, for water and sewer, be two years apart, so that, so that instead of seeing one big increase every once in a while, we'll see smaller increases every couple of years for water and sewer. Our plan is to do the sewer works and the stormwater utility in the midterm election years, and to do the water rate cases in the presidential election years. So we intended to bring the sewer rate request to you last year, but we had a lot of trouble getting the financial analysis completed in time, so we only did the stormwater. So now we're bringing the sewer rate request to you in 2019. So the next time, we would expect to do sewer would be 2022. In addition to the requests that council had made for frequent or scheduled rate reviews, we've been encouraged by some council members and by members of our board to take a cost-of-service study approach to setting rates for service. So, and a cost-of-service study, you establish classes for the customers, and you determine what it costs to provide the service to each class of customers. And in our case, as a municipal utility, we can't make a profit. So our charges are designed to exactly cover the cost of our operations. In 2016, as I said, we did the across-the-board increase of 22%. Shortly after that, we received a warning letter from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, I'll call them IDIM for short, that warned us that we had exceeded 90% of the capacity of the Dillman Road wastewater treatment plant for three consecutive years. As a result, we had, they gave us five years to come up with a plan for how we were going to make sure that the capacity of the plant met the growing demand in the Dillman Road basin. We've been working on that. We've had a number of meetings with IDIM. We've been working with contractors to do engineering design for a number of projects that both modernize our wastewater plants and also address the capacity limitations at Dillman. The rate request we're bringing tonight covers three things. It covers the inflation and the cost of operation and maintenance. That would be just the normal increasing costs that we face every year. Plant modernization and capacity improvements for the Dillman plant, and plant modification and some equipment replacement projects for the Blue Tripool plant. As far as customer classes, state law allows municipal utilities to establish differing rates for sewer works customers based on whether they reside within the city limits or whether they're outside the city limits. This accounts for a couple of things that are related to the cost of providing service. Primarily, out in the county, there are fewer customers per mile of pipe or per volume of pipe than there are in the city, simply because the population density is much lower. Also, the number of customers served by a lift station, same reason, is smaller than it is inside the city. So as a result, we've asked Crowe to analyze the difference in the cost of providing service inside and outside the city. Many communities in the state do have differing rates for customers inside and outside the city, and you'll see what kinds of numbers those are in Crowe's presentation. Our capital improvement plan calls for a total of approximately $75 million in capital replacements and improvements in the next five years. Of the $75 million, about 30 of it is spending that's dedicated to the capacity improvements and the modernization projects in the plants. The rest of it is your normal capital maintenance and replacement, fixing pumps, you know, replacing other equipment in the plants. Many of the modernization projects that we're considering will greatly reduce our use of electricity and our carbon footprint as a wastewater treatment utility. It does not include improvements to the digester at the Dillman plant. This is owing to the fact that there's currently a study going on to consider whether we want to move to an anaerobic digestion system. So we've really counted, we've put nothing in for the digester in the next five years, simply because we don't know what kind of a digester we're likely to have. And we don't want to spend a bunch of money improving our aerobic digester if we're going to simply replace it with an anaerobic system. So the capacity expansion portion of this won't be completed until after the five years covered by this rate request. This is very small, I apologize for it on the screen. It is in your packet. These two slides show the projects, the major projects that we're doing at the Dillman Road and Blue Tripool plants, and in our collection system. And then other is dealing with things like advanced metering and so forth. So these, these items are all placed in the details. If you have questions about any of the items specifically, we can address them during the question and answer. Mr. Schrader can handle those. I'd like to invite representatives from Crowe to come in and present the results of their financial analysis, and then I have some concluding remarks at the end. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Lottz, and I'm joined with my colleague Jennifer Wilson from Crowe. We prepared a presentation that I understand, I think will be... As Mr. Kelson mentioned, we prepared a rate and financing analysis for the sewage works, which I probably will refer to as utility throughout the duration of the presentation. However, that analysis was done on the sewage works. This is a summary of that report, and we're going to walk through some of the methodology behind that, as well as what we found. So to begin, when we do a rate and financing analysis...
It is in your packet. These two slides show the projects, the major projects that we're doing at the Dillman Road and Blue Tripool plants and in our collection system. And then other is dealing with things like advanced metering and so forth. So these items are all placed in the details. If you have questions about any of the items specifically, we can address them during the question and answer. Mr. Schrader can handle those. I'd like to invite representatives from Crowe to come in and present the results of their financial analysis, and then I have some concluding remarks at the end. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Lottz, and I'm joined with my colleague Jennifer Wilson from Crowe. We prepared a presentation that I understand, I think, will be... Thank you very much. As Mr. Kelson mentioned, we prepared a rate and financing analysis for the sewage works, which I probably will refer to as utility throughout the duration of the presentation. However, that analysis was done on the sewage works. This is a summary of that report, and we're going to walk through some of the methodology behind that as well as what we found. So to begin, when we do a rate and financing analysis, and we break it into a few different parts, first begins with a historical financial review that's taking a look at the last three years of operations for the sewage works, two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and eighteen. With that comes a look at the income statement, the balance sheet, as well as the fund balances of the sewage works and what those look like compared to mandatory fund balances as provided for in the bond ordinances. Next, we look at the development of a test year. Two thousand and eighteen provides the most recent year of operating results, but we want to work with utility staff to understand what will a future operating year look like in terms of changes in expenses, changes in budget, as well as looking at other things that are fixed, known, and measurable that might be affecting the utility differently than they had been in the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and eighteen period. And we use that test year to look at the total revenue requirements, what is required of the sewage works to operate for a given year. So in that are the operation and maintenance expenses that are analyzed through the test year. It's looking at the debt and lease payment obligations of the sewage works that we are, that are known and expected. And then it's looking also to what Mr. Kelson was referring to earlier on the capital improvement plan, the extensions and replacements, which is that amount of funding that the utility would need to have on hand to fund those improvements occurring over the next few years. It's a brief background and methodology. A few considerations for this specific analysis that Mr. Kelson already alluded to is, one, the capital improvement plan. And that's a ten-year plan. However, our report was looking at the first portion of it through two thousand and twenty-five. It's important to note that the rates that are proposed under this analysis are only looking through funding of that plan through two thousand and twenty-three. So there are some projects in two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five that are not considered for funding consideration. Reason for that is that when looking at the outstanding debt of the sewage works, there's some debt that reaches final maturity in the two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five timeframe, meaning that the sewage works will have greater capacity, greater funding capacity, that is, to take on additional projects at that time through a bond issue or through another funding source. So we left those years out of the analysis with the thought in mind that it'd be more appropriate to look at those during that two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four timeline as that debt is rolling off to analyze how could projects be most effectively funded rather than trying to project that this many years in advance. The other component that we were considering was an outside surcharge factor, alluding to what is the difference in providing service to customers located outside of the city versus customers that are inside the city and understanding the cost differential between those two customer classes. To give a few highlights from that historical financial review, beginning with the balance sheet, one thing to note is that the sewage works has been able to build up ten point four million dollars of cash in anticipation of these capital improvement projects. Those funds have been set aside and are ultimately going to be used to offset the funding requirements that would need to be funded through either cash on hand, on a pay-as-you-go format, or through additional bonding proceeds. So that's a very strong thing on the asset side of the balance sheet. I mentioned before that we take a look at fund balances compared to requirements outlined in bond ordinances. All of the fund balances of the utilities that we're looking at, including the sinking fund, the debt service reserve fund, and the operating fund, those are all exceeding, at or exceeding, the balances stipulated in those bond ordinances. The chart you'll see on this page is summarizing the annual debt payments. And this is getting to that point I summarized earlier that you can see in the next few years, there will be a decrease in the annual amount of debt service that's required of the utility. That's what this chart is summarizing, is for each year, what level of debt service will the sewage works be required to make. So you'll see that there's some level of drop-off in two thousand and twenty-one, and then beginning in two thousand and twenty-four and through the next five years or so, there's continued decreases in that annual level of debt service. Again, getting to the point of, when you're looking at those projects on the back part of the capital improvement plan, there's going to be a little bit more flexibility from a funding perspective to consider how you might finance those or pay for those down the line. Moving on to the income statement, you'll see the, both revenues and operating expenses of the utility summarized, two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and eighteen. Fairly consistent across those, that three-year period. I'll note in two thousand and seventeen, you'll see an increase in revenues. That's commensurate with the rate increase that went into effect January first of two thousand and seventeen. That was approved in two thousand and sixteen. That was a twenty-two percent increase. Expenses have been relatively consistent during that same time period. However, when we start to look and develop that test year is when we really hone in on expenses as well to make sure that those historical years are going to be indicative of the future operating year. Moving on to the next portion of the report was that analysis on serving outside-city customers compared to inside-city customers. To frame this discussion, it's important to consider that the sewage works is incurring all types of costs in providing service to customers. Part of our analysis was identifying that portion of costs that are common to all customers, regardless of location, versus the portion of costs that are common to just outside-city customers. And so that's what these next two slides are going to be summarizing, is building that differentiation between the two costs, costs borne by all customers regardless of location, and then those costs specific to outside-city customers. So an example of a cost that is common to all, no matter where you're situated, inside the city or outside the city, if you're sending flow through the sewage work system, that flow will ultimately get treated at the treatment plant. So a treatment plant cost is going to be common to an outside-city customer or an inside-city customer. Where you start to see some differences materialize is when you look and consider the collection system of the utility, that infrastructure that transmits flow from a customer's location to the treatment plant. In analyzing the collection system of the sewage works, it's apparent that some of that collection system is in service to only outside-city customers. So it's not being used by customers located within the city. And that's where really becomes the driver of our analysis, is looking at collection systems of the sewage works, and how can we identify the cost component associated with that collection system. So to begin with, the top part of this chart is taking a look at the collection system located, actually, not exactly located whether inside the city or outside the city, but rather who that collection system is serving. Is it serving inside and outside customers? Or is it serving only outside-city customers? So in viewing the volume of pipe that's common to all customers, that comes in at just under one and a half million cubic feet or eighty-eight percent of the total volume of the collection system. That compared to the portion of pipe serving only outside customers, which is just under two hundred thousand cubic feet or eleven point seven seven percent of the total collection system. That allocation is going to be important for determining that portion of collection system costs that could be attributable to outside-city customers. Next, we look at depreciation expense, and we summarize all depreciation expense of the sewage works here. However, we really wanting to focus on the collection system depreciation expense. The utility or sewage works has made a lot of investments in its infrastructure, both at the plant and in the collection system. Depreciation is that measure of cost on an annual basis of how can we count that value of a previous investment that we've made. So in looking at two thousand and eighteen, just under one point four million dollars of depreciation expenses being recorded for a collection system. The bottom part of this table is summarizing all of the costs associated with the collection system. That includes transmission and distribution expenses at just under two million dollars. Booster and lift stations, as Mr. Kelson referred to earlier, at just under two hundred thousand dollars. And then lastly, that component of depreciation expense specific to the collection system at just under one point four million dollars. In total, that comes to collection system expense of three point four nine million. When we apply our eleven point seven seven percent allocation factor, that results in total costs attributable to only outside customers of four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now that we've identified that portion of costs specific to outside customers, we need to build a differentiation or a factor between those costs that are borne by all customers versus those costs specifically borne by outside-city customers. So to do that, we look at the two thousand and eighteen operating year and consider what were the revenue requirements in two thousand and eighteen. So that includes operating expenses, which encompasses depreciation, and those, that fifteen million dollars represents total operating expenses. We back out that portion of operating expenses specific to outside customers because we're really trying to identify here what costs are common to all, both inside and outside. Next comes our debt payments and lease obligations. I mean, those are all listed, resulting in current costs of utility common to all customers of twenty point four million dollars. Now, since these costs are incurred in service to all customers, we can apply them, or rather allocate them, across the entire base of customers. So if we look at build consumption of the entire sewage works, that comes in at just over two and a half billion gallons. So taking that twenty point four million dollars and spreading that across the build flow of the sewage works, that results in a cost allocation of seven dollars and ninety-seven cents in costs per thousand gallons of built sewage. And again, that represents costs that are common to all customers. Next, we do a similar exercise just with those costs that are specific to outside customers. So that four hundred and ten thousand dollars that we calculated on the previous slide is now pulled forward. We don't get to apply it, or allocate it, rather, over the entire base of the sewage works. We can only look at that build flow associated with outside-city customers, which is over four hundred and thirty-two million gallons. So dividing that four hundred and ten thousand dollars of costs specific to outside customers over the build flow associated with outside customers results in a cost allocation of ninety-five cents per thousand gallons. Now, when viewing the responsibility of an outside-city customer, they're responsible for the costs that are common to all users of the utility, regardless of location inside or outside the city. And then they're also responsible for that portion of cost specific to them. So in this example, or rather this calculation, that's seven dollars and ninety-seven cents plus ninety-five cents, resulting in a cost allocation of eight dollars and ninety-two cents per thousand gallons of usage. In view of how that relates, or what is the differential between that calculation of costs compared to the cost common to all, we would divide eight dollars and ninety-two cents divided by seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, which results in a factor or differential of twelve percent. And that is what we are calculating as the outside-city surcharge factor is a twelve percent difference in cost between customers located outside the city and inside the city. The outside-city surcharge factor, then, comes into play when considering what would a future operating year look like for the sewage works, both for revenues and expense considerations. And so that's when we make adjustments to historical financial information to develop what we would expect the, a test year to look like. So we make a couple of different adjustments when getting to that test year. One are some bookkeeping adjustments, making sure that the two thousand and eighteen year, we can understand and adjust to be representative of the revenues and expenses of the utility or sewage works. On the revenue side, we make an adjustment for the additional revenues that would be received from implementing an outside-city surcharge factor. So that adjustment is taking that twelve percent differential multiplied times the revenue from outside-city customers during the test year and applying that increase to future pro forma or test year revenues. Next, we make a variety of expense adjustments between, again, the historical years and then a next operating year. That's taken into account changes in budgeted salaries and wages, as well as making sure that we're counting for some expenses that weren't actually recorded during the two thousand and eighteen year, including pilot and the shared services contract. And all those adjustments, again, are being made with the effort and goal of identifying what would a future year of operations look like. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jennifer Wilson, who's going to talk in more detail about funding of the capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. What I'm showing here on this slide is how we're funding that seventy-five million dollar capital improvement plan. Okay. How we're funding that, there we go. How we're funding that seventy-five million dollar capital improvement plan that was presented earlier. So we're proposing in the year two thousand and twenty that a bond issue be done so that it can fund twelve million dollars worth of those projects. And that will pay for projects that were slated in the year two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Then we're proposing that in the year two thousand and twenty-two, the cash balance of ten point four million dollars that had been built up by reorganizing the projects and that had been built up since the last rate increase be used in those two years to fund some of the large projects. We then also show in our report that in the year two thousand and twenty-four, another bond issue is proposed, but we are not, in this rate analysis, proposing what that rate impact will be. As Craig and Mr. Kelson had alluded to, there is some debt that is rolling off. And so at that point in time, you might have the capacity to take on additional debt without making any rate impact. And then there's, within the capital improvement plan is automatic meter reading lease, and that is taken care of in another revenue requirement. So that's the red pie slice. And then the rest of it in blue is the pay-as-you-go capital. So that will be paid about four million dollars per year to pay for projects on an ongoing basis. We are proposing in the year two thousand and twenty that you issue bonds. It would be a twenty-year bond issue that'd be issued in the open market. And we're estimating that the net interest cost rate would be three point two four percent, and that'd be a fixed rate. It wouldn't be a variable rate. It'd be fixed once at the time of sale. This would result in a nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars increase in debt service each year. So we've layered, the blue mark is the additional debt that we're proposing over the current outstanding debt in yellow that had been presented earlier. This new debt is added to the currently outstanding debt to the other revenue requirements of the utility. So the big blue mark is the, blue pie slice is the operation and maintenance expenses at twelve point four million dollars. Taxes is six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Debt service would be five point two million dollars per year. The lease payments are one million dollars, and the extensions and replacements is four point one million dollars. So the total revenue requirements is twenty-three point three million dollars. Your current adjusted operating revenues that have been adjusted, as Craig discussed earlier, are twenty-two point seven million. So there's a deficiency of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This results in across-the-board rate increase of three percent on all customers. So the inside-city customers would see an increase of three percent, and the outside-city customers would see an increase of fifteen percent because they would see the twelve percent surcharge and the three percent increase. What the impact is to an individual customer can be shown here on this typical monthly bill. The inside-city residential users usually use about three thousand three hundred thousand gallons per month. So their rate, we showed there, at three thousand gallons, would be increasing by ninety-three cents per month. And then the outside-city customers' average user uses three thousand seven hundred gallons. So again, if you look at three thousand gallons, their increase would be four dollars and seventy-nine cents per month. We did do a rate survey, and the results can be shown here. We surveyed thirty-three other communities that are population greater than twenty-five thousand, so we felt those were comparable to you. Of that, eight of them had a rate surcharge for outside-city customers ranging from fourteen percent to fifty percent. Bloomington ends up right there in the middle with their current rates and charges at five thousand gallons at forty-six dollars per month. And the rate increase would bring them to the top of the middle third at forty-eight dollars per month. I'm now going to hand this back over to Vic for closing comments. Thank you.
He's going to wrap up.
Thank you. So the last thing I just wanted to provide to you is what our staff is recommending. We recommended this to the Utility Service Board, and they have passed along their recommendation that the council adopt this. CBU staff is recommending to raise about five percent in revenues overall. That would be allocated as a three percent increase for the customers who reside inside the city. That would be allocated as a 3% increase for the customers who reside inside the city, and 15% increase for the customers who reside outside the city. And this reflects the 12% difference in the cost of providing service to the customer classes. And I thank you, and we're all here for any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. And anyone from council have questions for the fiscal analyst at Crowe or for Mr. Kelson? Mr. Volin?
Yes, thank you. What's the total population served by CBU when you include the territories of wholesalers?
The total population?
Do you have any?
And that's on the water side, right? We serve, we don't have any wholesale sewer customers.
Okay, then, then, but I mean, we're still talking about people outside the city who are getting an increase, so clearly we're, so maybe you're only serving them directly, is that what you're saying?
That's right. We only serve sewer customers directly.
Then let me ask that, what is the total population, not including wholesalers, since they don't count?
I don't have that tip of my tongue.
Roughly?
I can't remember, it's...
It's more than 85,000, right?
Well, the total for the entire system, yes, more than 85,000, yes.
Okay.
We have around 22,000 connections, is that right? Something like that.
Okay, I mean, I'd like to know that for next week.
Okay, I'll get that information for you.
Is there anyone right now in the city who would have to pay more?
Who would have to pay?
Well, so the thing is, when you say outside versus inside the city, you're really talking about more dense versus less dense places.
Yes.
If we were to annex a place that currently is outside the city, their rate wouldn't necessarily go down because they were located in this less dense place. Is that not right to say?
Actually, it's a little bit more complicated. What would happen is that, I presume, as, as council was looking at an annexation legislation, we would know what the map was, and the analysis that, that we've just seen from Crowe would be re-executed based on the new maps. So whatever the surcharge is, would either go up or down depending on what the new map looked like.
Right, but I'm trying to get to the bottom of the idea that somehow some parts of the area outside the city limits are, you know, is this, is this not an arbitrary sort of definition? Aren't there some dense places just outside the boundaries and some sparsely populated places within the city?
Certainly. The, the challenge there, though, is that the legislature only gives us the city limit as a boundary for estimating, for developing customer classes.
So it's not really your choice, like this is, this is what state law allows you to do?
That's right. But, but I will say that if there was property outside the city that was annexed into the city, the, the people moving into the city would certainly see their rates, would almost certainly see their rates go down when they were inside the city.
Okay, good to know. The other question I have is, isn't it fair to say, contrarily, that there are parts of the system inside the city that will not be used by people outside the city? Why, I mean, are the people outside the city paying for the infrastructure inside the city?
Well, the portion of the infrastructure that's inside the city that everybody pays for are the large interceptors and so forth. So we do have, and similarly, we, the large interceptors that, that travel from, say, downtown down to the, to the Dillman plant, those actually serve everyone, whether you're inside or whether you're outside. So, but part of those lie outside the city, and the portion of those that lies outside the city is, is not considered part of the surcharge.
So why is it that an interceptor serves everybody?
It does, yes.
And you explain that?
Yes.
Explain that, why that is?
Well, it serves everyone because it takes all of the water to the plant from a large, from a large catchment basin. So you're bringing all the water in, and everybody is benefiting from the, the existence of, of that interceptor.
So it's not just a matter of filtering out fog, for example? Fat oil and grease?
Well...
That's not the kind of thing happens there?
So the, the matter with fats, oils, and grease is that the, the cost of dealing with fats, oils, and grease are distributed equally across all customers because the, the management of the grease is actually handled by the customers that discharge the grease, in, in the case of restaurants and other, or institutions like that. But there's also fog that's generated by residents. We all generate varying amounts of fog in our own homes. So that portion of the fog is, is, is not accounted for separately in your rate, it's, it's accounted for by equalizing it across everybody.
Okay, so in other words, you're saying that there are some interceptors that are only serving people outside the city?
I don't think so. I think all of our interceptors serve everyone.
Can you see why I'm confused by this? Like, is it, I, I don't feel like I've gotten a satisfactory answer to the question that there would be, I don't understand what parts would only be used by people outside the city.
Well, that would be the, the collection mains in neighborhoods outside the city don't serve people inside the city. So they're accounted for separately in the surcharge. Because, because the number of people who are attached, who are connected to those mains is smaller. So the cost of maintaining and operating those portions of the system are allocated across fewer customers. If you take a mile of sewer pipe, there are fewer customers connected to it and fewer customers paying for it than inside.
I totally get that, I just, but you argued that there are, I mean, again, the, I'll restate the question, are there not parts of the system inside the city that are not being, not helping people outside the city? Like, I, I just don't understand. I, I'll withdraw the question. Thank you.
Remember Chopra, did you still have a question?
Well, I think that Councilmember Volin was asking my question, which isn't so much a question, but a point to be made, that, you know, Isabel and I contribute and use the sewer systems differently, and we both live in the city, right?
Yes.
So, no confusion there. It's, and I understand it's arbitrary, and there's not a real practical, a practical way to address the matter otherwise. Is that right? I mean, if you could differentiate between my usage and Isabel's and all of us who live in the city, and then equally compare them to people in the county, you can't, you can't practically do that, right?
Well, you do it on an average basis. So the average density of our, of the service area that lies inside the city is much higher than the average density of the portion of the system that's, of the service area that's outside the city.
Right, but what I'm saying is to be more accurate than that is impractical.
Well, it's, it's actually that...
No.
The law allows us to establish customer classes based on whether they're inside the city or outside the city. They can't, we don't have the ability to establish customer classes for, I live in Park Ridge, so there's, for, for...
No, I understand.
The northeast side and the south side and so forth. We don't have that, that authority.
So, so again, it's more of a point than a question, so I'll go ahead and move on. My question is, the city chooses, or has the option and agrees to, or however it may be, to provide our services outside the city. I mean, there's no one forcing us to do that, right?
That is right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions to my left? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you for the presentations. This will be reevaluated based on annexation?
Yes, if there was an annexation map proposed, we would rework the analysis.
Okay, is, is that a, is that a large task? In, in other words, is it, I mean, everything's in spreadsheets that could be modified by algorithm or something, and you could arrive at?
Yeah, part of this exercise for, for us and for the, for the contractor and for our staff was establishing all of the data that's associated with it, and some of that required rearranging some databases. And since we've done it once now, doing it a second time or a third time would not be nearly as complicated.
Okay. Remind me again of what percentage of that 2018 number of 21 million, almost 22 million dollars in revenue are derived from county?
From customers outside.
Outside.
I don't know that percentage. Do you know that?
That amounts $435,000 approximately.
Okay, so the 12% is based on that?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. And what is, did you have an estimate of the proportion of residents outside the city that, that have sewer, as opposed to septic or are in packaged plants?
Sorry, I just looked up the number, it's actually $410,000, just to be...
Thank you.
Totally accurate there.
Okay. And then proportion of those that have sewer as opposed to septic?
That I don't know. I, I don't know how many residences there are with septic tanks in the county, but we can get an estimate of that.
Okay. I mean, clearly, I mean, this all makes sense because you're trying to internalize, you're trying to reflect the cost, the true cost of extending service away, you know, outside the city, and, and that makes sense to me. There's a cost associated with, with that, and people who choose to live in the city, I mean, it shouldn't be subsidizing sprawl, in a sense. I mean, I guess this is internalizing costs in that regard, right? So, but the, the, and I know you, you have another presentation, but the other point is that we don't want people using septic tanks.
Absolutely. We do not.
Right? So you don't want the cost to be such that it is, provides an incentive for people not to hook on?
Well, that, that's true. The, the challenge with septic is, is more complicated, though, because if you have a septic tank and it fails, you're required by the county to connect to a sewer if there's one within 300 feet of your home. If that sewer doesn't exist, you can't do that. So you're faced with replacing a septic tank at, at a very large expense. And in the case where, and where the, where things get complicated is that in order to have, if you have small lots, like city lots, if you have a septic tank, finding another place on your lot for a septic tank is very difficult. So you, you need, if everybody's on septic, it necessitates everyone having larger lots. So those septic tanks aren't interfering with each other and polluting the regional system, and also because if one fails and you need to build a new one, you'll have a place to do it. So, so that, that sort of thing. So it gets more complicated. What, what this, what we're, what we're hoping is that we're making the, the charges reflect the, the difference in, in providing the service to different, to the two different classes of customers if they're on the sewer. It, it will still, but it will always be a, up to the customer or the potential customer to decide whether they want to work with their neighbors to build a sewer in their neighborhood, or whether they want to replace all their septic tanks.
Yeah, but I guess we're in an agreement that it's a public good to try to motivate people to move away from septic, especially in this area with heavy clay soils and so forth.
Certainly it is, yes.
Okay.
And there's something, may I respond, just, there's something I left out when I was responding to the question about costs that are borne by everybody. Half, roughly half of the cost of running, running the sewage works is debt service. Most of that debt service, in fact, almost all of that debt service is wrapped up in the, the two treatment plants. So, and, and we're treating water that goes to the plant as being exactly the same regardless of where it came from. So operations, most of the cost of our operations are in the plants, the cost of the staff in the plants, the cost of electricity, the cost of the chemicals, the cost of all those sorts of things. So when we talk about the difference in costs, you know, that it might look kind of small to you because of the population density differences, but the, what it's really only reflecting is that portion of the collection system that serves only outside customers. So that, that explains how that, you know, the, the vast majority of the costs that are borne by everyone are, that serve everyone, are the cost of operating the treatment plants. I apologize for neglecting that a moment ago.
One follow-up, if I could. So when you get a bill, you have sewer, stormwater, and water reflected on that bill?
Yes. And, and the sanitation.
Yeah, and sanitation now. And apart from sanitation, are those accounts, they're, they're in no way fungible? In other words, you can't take money from one account and use it in another one for debt service or anything like that? They're separate, correct?
We can loan from one to another, but we have to pay it back in a year.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. In one of the slides, well, actually in a number of them, it looks like we had profit over the past three years. Is that how we accumulated that $10.4 million for capital?
It, it's not profit. When we wrote the 2016 rate case, we anticipated doing a large variety of projects. Those were in the rate case. But just shortly after we completed the rate review with council in that year, we got this thing called a sewer ban warning letter. It's a warning from IDEM that if we don't start taking action to, to increase our capacity to handle the growth, that IDEM has the, has the right to disallow any new connections to the sewers. So that means that we've got to get to work on having a plan. So what we did was, those projects that were in the CIP in 2016 were held back so that we could make an integrated approach to the whole problem, problem, rather than doing one project or another, that we're making all of those projects into a larger program with the idea that we can optimize costs as we execute the project by not doing them piecemeal. So what's happened is, as we've been going through the engineering work to design the, the improvements for the, including the capacity issue, we've been holding that money for those projects. So that money is set aside in a separate fund simply for the purpose of executing future capital projects. So it's really not profit, it's money that we've been, it's money that we intended to spend on capital projects, but we deferred the projects and saved the money so that we can do the projects in a more organized way.
Mr. Loach, do you have something else to add to that?
Yeah. In addition to that as well, if you look at the income statement highlights, I think that was the slide you may have been referring to, the income statement highlights, when revenues are exceeding expenses, that portion of expense is only operation and maintenance expense. There are other revenue requirements of the utility that are not reflected in that bar, such as the debt service payments and the lease payments, ongoing capital needs. So part of that differential will be those other things that you need to fund that, from an accounting perspective, don't show up on the income statement, but in actuality are, are revenue requirements of the utility that would need to be paid.
So it's basically, then, things like debt service that requires us to have a rate increase? Debt service payments?
I was referring only to that income statement, which showed the revenues in excess of the operation and maintenance expenses. It is true that the revenue requirements or revenues need to be set to pay operation, maintenance, debt service, lease payments, and ongoing capital. However, the, the factors for this increase are mostly related to the capital improvement plan and those funding considerations. And then also, there's, there's always budgeted adjustments to operation and maintenance expenses that would also warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterbrom, do you still have a question?
Yeah. Are there commercial rates and residential rates?
There are not. The reason for this is that we charge different rates for water distribution based on the commercial and the residential, but all of the wastewater that's produced is treated as being the same, with one small caveat, and that is for commercial or industrial customers, they're subject to our industrial pretreatment requirements, and they're, and in the, in some cases, they pay additional surcharges if their wastewater is, is stronger than normal wastewater, like a brewery, for example. So there are surcharges for the biochemical oxygen demand and for the suspended solids that come out from industrial facilities. They're also subject to, in many cases, pretreatment requirements to make sure that their pHs are not different from the pH of the, the rest of the flow and so forth. So that is all, those costs are all internalized by the, the discharger at the time that they do it. Similarly, the commercial properties that are subject to our, the fog requirements, the grease interceptors, the inspection programs and so forth, those costs are all internalized by paying to, to do those services at the, at the point before they're discharged. So the idea is that our commercial and our industrial customers are assumed to be discharging the same character of wastewater as everyone else, and if their wastewater is stronger than everyone... And if their wastewater is stronger than everyone else's, they pay a surcharge based on sampling that we do.
Right. So the larger bills, I mean, the businesses outside of the city might feel that 15% quite a bit. Would, would that be a fair statement or not?
I would assume so, yes.
Yeah. And what would the average increase have been if we didn't differentiate?
About 5%.
5% versus 3%?
Versus 3%, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I have a few questions about your capital improvement plan. So the plant expansion at Bluechur Pool, it looks like in 2025, you're expecting to spend $12 million. Is that like a whole new plant or?
Oh, no. A new plant would be about 50 or 60 million dollars, or maybe more than that. What's, what's happening at Bluechur Pool is that to do a larger expansion, so right now the, the rate of capacity for that plant is 6 million gallons per day. If we wanted to raise it up to, say, eight or 10 million gallons per day, we would actually have to go build additional treatment basins and clarifiers in order to handle that additional flow. So that would be a, and we'd have to expand the size of the, the lift station and wet well at the head of the plant. We'd have to expand, basically everything would have to get expanded. So it would be a major project to expand the Bluechur Pool plant. So we aren't anticipating having to do that for at least until 2025 before we would be starting to embark on a project like that. But that's all subject to change depending on development patterns. So if development in the Bluechur Pool basin happens very quickly over the next two or three years, we may need to accelerate that. On the other hand, if development in the Bluechur Pool basin doesn't happen in the next five years, we could, we would push that back based only on the, the need for additional capacity at the plant.
I see. Thank you. And then I also see the, there's a column here for 2019, and I'm curious about how those are being funded because we're already into September.
Well, we're paying for those out of cash. So we have, we have cash reserves that we've been saving and we're using those. We're also, every year, we have a budget, a portion of our budget called extensions and replacements. It's basically, if you take all of our total revenues and subtract the debt service, the cost of, of personnel, the cost of, of utilities and supplies and so forth, if you subtract all of that from our total revenue, what's left over is called E and R, extensions and replacements, and that's used for capital projects. Some of that money's been socked away for this, this big project that we're gonna, big set of projects we're gonna have to do, but we're also having to do capital projects in the plants that are not affected by that larger, that larger initiative. So those things we're paying for out of cash. So when you look at the, when you look at the, the change that's called out in our, in, in our new CIP, there's about $30 million that are dedicated to new spending in the plants related to modernization and capacity improvement at Dillman. Those $30 million will be paid for roughly, in rough thirds, about a third from new bonds, about a third from cash on hand, and then the remainder would be pay-as-you-go capital from the E and R that we're gonna be, the E and R funds that we'll have in the coming years.
Okay. May I ask one more question on the same topic? So you all, you have for this year at Bluechur Pool, you have a $306,000 roof replacement? I don't know, I know in some areas you do have solar panels. Would this be an opportunity to add solar panels on roofs at Bluechur Pool?
Actually, that's a question that I asked just a couple of weeks ago, and we're, we're going to look into it.
So that has, that project has not been put out to bid yet, so it could possibly?
Well, it has been put out to bid, but we have to look at the structural limitations of the, of the structure itself. And I believe they were looked at before, but we're not replacing the roof infrastructure. We're replacing the roofing material in that case. So, but I did ask, can we, can we do any more panels there? The, the Bluechur Pool solar project is still not complete. So there's a lot of variables in that at this point that we're still working, working through.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that that, that's an option to add after the new roofing material is put on. Is, is solar a facet at both wastewater treatment plants currently?
Yes. At the, well, and at the drinking water plant, too. We're, we will be commissioning the, the, the new solar panels at the Monroe Water Treatment Plant in the next few weeks. It's just owing to being able to schedule it around our demand cycles. But the, at the Dillman plant, there, there are three portions of the array. The first portion has been in service for a while, and the other two are nearly ready to go into service. So though, we'll be, we'll be tying those in shortly.
And you said there are already some panels at Bluechur Pool?
At Bluechur Pool, we haven't, we haven't actually begun installation yet in the interest of getting the other two plants right first, and our service center and the southeast tank. At Bluechur Pool, there's, there's some challenges with some of the land being below the, below the 100-year floodplain, which, which obviates putting solar panels there. We do have some parts of the property that we can work on. So we're still working on the map for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin.
Isn't it safe to say that the bulk of the reason for the increase is capital improvement? Is that not?
It's maybe, maybe half and half, I would say.
So the other half being just operating?
Inflation, yes.
Well, I guess I meant the new, like, the, the difference between the revenue and the expenses, that extra is what you're expecting to use to do capital improvement?
Primarily capital improvements, yes.
I mean, so even to call it profit is a mistake. It's excess revenues. There's no shareholders except the city, the residents of the city. Okay. The other question I have is, how much bigger can our plant ever get? Like, what's the maximum, is the maximum capacity, for example, of Dillman Road the capacity of Lake Monroe? Or like, will we have to build a new plant? I mean, is its maximum imaginable capacity 40 million gallons a day, 50?
That's a great question. So the Dillman plant, if, if we look at the Dillman plant right now, the, we can, the, the engineers tell us that we can get the capacity of that plant to 20 million gallons per day without building any additional treatment basins. Most of our basins are used for aeration, for biological treatment. The other two basins are used for aerobic digestion. The high, the most, the largest hydraulic capacity, that is the amount of water we can push through the plant, and with the current set of pipes and so forth, is around 25 million gallons per day. So if we get to 20 million gallons per day of treatment capacity, of biological capacity, then we would still have some headroom on the hydraulic side. However, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have enough biological capacity to treat the additional 5 million gallons. At that point, we would have to build new digesters, whether they're anaerobic or aerobic, we would have to build new digesters in order to get to 25 million. But the engineers tell us, we could get to 25 million by converting, we could probably get to, I think we can almost certainly get to 25 million by converting the digesters to aeration and adding, and rebuilding the digestion portion of the plant separately.
Sure, but now we're, I mean, I guess the reason I ask is because it seemed that 20 was a modest increase. Perhaps, you know, we wanted to go bigger than that.
Well, and 20 will get us, based on the, the current rate of increase in demand, 20 gets us out to, gets us out about 15?
Years.
Or 18 years. So.
Okay.
So we're, we're pretty solid there. At the Bluechur Pool plant, any expansion we do there is going to require additional basins, so the project?
You're talking about northward. I mean, Bluechur Pool's in the far, far north of the city.
Bottom road up north of town. So right now, that plant is more or less as big as it can get in its current configuration. So to expand it would be, would require additional construction on the site.
So it's at its maximum of how many million gallons a day?
Well, it's at 6 million.
6 million.
Right now, but to get it, to increase its capacity, we would have to build additional basins there.
But I mean, it's a matter of just building biological and hydraulic capacity. That's, you don't need to sort of build the infrastructure of another plant. You can expand those as long as there's room near them.
As long as there's room, and the pipes will carry the water, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Granger.
Thank you. Is this, is this the first year that we're doing this surcharge for county residents, or is it just that it's a, a increase?
The, the surcharge for outside-city customers is a, would, is, this would be the first time it had been enacted. But once it's enacted, future increases would be roughly the same for both inside and outside because it only covers the difference.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterbom?
Yeah, since utilities gets its money either way, the, the pay of the differentiation, is that to capture anticipated growth in the, in the surrounding areas of the county? What's the motive of the differentiation?
It's simply to allocate, to make sure that the customers are paying what it costs to provide them the service.
But it's spread broadly, much more broadly if you don't differentiate.
On average, over the customer class.
Unevenness is within the city boundaries, so it's a little arbitrary on the boundary. So is there, is there a thought that there will be a lot of growth on the outside and this will help pay for the extension of sewer?
That, that could happen, but that's up to the various plan commissions. And the Utility Service Board has to approve extensions outside of Area A. We have the Area A, which is basically our service area. So extensions outside of those, outside Area A have to be approved by the USB prior to final approval. Extensions inside of Area A are, are, we, are allowed, no matter what.
So was there a lightbulb moment when you guys decided, we'll charge the county this and the city this? And what, what happened there?
Well, what happened was, we were looking at the, the question of, of cost of service analysis for, for both water and wastewater. You know, we have customer classes depending on what you do with the water, on the water side. And we'll be talking a lot about that next year. But the, but we, we haven't had customer classes on the sewer side. The legislation allows us to do it based on whether you're inside or outside of the city limits.
Will that happen with water as well next time?
No, it won't because it's already account, with, with water, it's accounted for by the fact that we're, we're selling wholesale water to customers that serve areas that are outside of our service area.
So you just knew you were allowed to, and so you did it? You knew, I was looking for that moment when you decided to do it.
Oh, well, the moment was when we started looking at the ability to establish customer classes for, for water and for sewer. And when you look at what other utilities are doing in the state, as, as Jennifer said, about a third of the communities that have municipal sewage works that are larger than 25,000 population, about a third of them actually do have a surcharge. And if this surcharge of 12% is established, we would be the ninth utility to do it, and ours would be the smallest of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council? See, oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I just wanted to ask if we could have the slides sent to us, sent to the council?
Certainly, yes.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions from council, we go to the public. Were any comments? Please step to the podium and sign your name and state your name.
Yes, my name is Gary Arbert, and I'm a resident in the county. I'm still trying to, I'm curious about your question about the moment that it was decided to do this surcharge. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the coincidence of this and the annexation issue that came up last year a couple of years ago. But I, I certainly understand that there are a lot of inequities in providing services. I'm sure if, if you're in the city and you're living in one of the new apartment complexes that are being built in town, that is, that is much more profitable for the district to provide service for those people and to reap the benefits of the revenue that comes in than it is for single-family residents. Again, I live in the county on this, on the other side of Roar, now by the Speedway, and a little subdivision, Cardinal Glen. And between our subdivision and Roar, there's another subdivision, I don't know the name of it. It's on Derby Drive and some of the cul-de-sacs around that. And then on, as I understand it, the, the north side is the, would be the city. You have to correct me if I'm wrong, because that's been my understanding, anyway. And the density of the subdivisions, the two subdivisions on our side are, is greater than the density of the subdivision, single-family residents, both sides, is greater than the density on the city side. So again, I'm, I'm, just want to make the point that, I understand there are a lot of inequities. And I understand that this is the only thing that the law allows you to do. I would, I hesitate to say it, but there are a lot of bad laws in this state, and maybe this is one of them. And I'm, I'm sorry for perhaps even bringing it up. But I just, I just feel that this is, this is not an equitable resolution to the issue of inside the city limits or outside the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? And if so, feel free to make your way to the podium. We do ask that you sign in and state your name.
Hi. My name is Phil Argenti. I live in the county as well. And I kind of want to second his comments and also some of the comments and questions that made. So the, the idea of classes, it's, it is an inequality. So because I choose to live in the county, that when the development was built, when this neighborhood was built, the developer put in city sewer, city water, we are being treated differently and having to pay more. So I don't use the, on a daily basis, the, the sewage system, whatever in the city, but I'm being charged for that. Okay, it's a city utility, I get that. But the, the idea of classes, and I think you brought the point, if, if we were to annex, it was discussed a couple of years ago, then the rates would go down. Nothing has changed. The pipes are still there. The amount of water is still there, but because now we're in this arbitrary boundary of a city, our rates would go down. So I don't see how that's fair either. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public this evening? And seeing none, we are back to the council. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I've often thought about the, the fact that, that we do provide services to people outside the city. And it, not, not that I'm saying anything for annexation. I think if we do that, it has to be thoughtful, it has to involve neighbors. But, but I'm thinking about us as a city providing services to people who live outside of the city. And I actually think it's a good idea that we are charging proportional surcharge for these services. Now, these gentlemen talked about annexation. Let's say the neighborhood is annexed. The city has an obligation to provide services to city residents. So we shouldn't charge you more than we're charging anybody else because now you live in the city. But I think about, the way that it worked in my mind, it's really about the pipe. But I think about, the way that it worked in my mind, it's really about the pipes going out there. You're taking the pipes outside of the city. I mean, all the, everybody uses all the pipes inside the city, so that price is the same. But now we have pipes outside the city that's, CPU is responsible for. And we are going outside of the city to provide that service and I, I appreciate that, that surcharge. It's really a cost for doing services and it makes sense to me. I also want to thank Crow for that presentation. Sometimes numbers roll around in my head and my eyes flip backwards, but this time I just found it really fascinating and I could follow it and it, it made things clear for me and I, I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chopra?
Councilmember Simms, I actually had a question, that's why I was trying to raise it quickly. It's a short one, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Could you again bring up the slide that shows the day, the average county users' increase in cost per month? I believe you showed that up there.
Could we want to comment while he pulls it up?
Well, I was, I was going to comment while it was up.
I just, it might take him a minute, so.
So I'll start my comment. How does that sound?
You're going to wait?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start my comment and when it's up, I can finish and just roll it right in. Because my question will be answered.
Okay.
Okay, so what's the, what's the additional cost per month for an average county user?
So up to 3,000, a customer that uses up to 3,000 gallons would see an increase of $4.79 per month. Actually, that's up to 4,000. It would be, yeah, $4.79 to get, that's all the way up to 4,000 gallons per month.
Okay, thank you. So I do think that this proposal makes sense. It certainly doesn't make perfect sense. To make perfect sense, as I alluded to earlier, every single city and/or county user would get to pay exactly what they're imposing on the system and that's just impractical. It, it does make sense to, to draw a line. Is it arbitrary? No. Is it sensical? Yes. And is it allowable by state? Yes. So I'm in favor of this. And you know, I've had some people emailing me from outside of the county who are in favor of this. And I've heard some people speak, you know, not necessarily against, but questioning this, this idea. But not once did it, has anyone said to me, oh gee, I won't be able to afford that. And I think that's where, where if it were really a question of affordability, I would, I would be a little more hesitant. But right now I'm leaning towards yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I found it interesting about the light bulb moment and I think we all can understand that analogy. This is more of a, over time, a 25-watt bulb that moves to a 40-watt bulb that moves to a 50-watt bulb. It's that kind of moment. And there are many factors that have brought us to this point. I was stressed out and some of the folks that we all represent when we had the 22% But one of the things is, is that if you don't keep up with the expenses and all of the other investment things that we didn't do for several years, and then we have to get caught up, and then that's where you get those spikes. And I think that's why we talked a lot about bringing it to us more often, so it's not spike, it's more, until we kind of get caught up and be where we need to be. There's a lot of factors. We've done some work on College Mall Road that's going to reroute some things from, as I understand it, from Delman toward Blucher. We got the hospital on the bypass and when that's in, that's going to have to go Blucher's way. So I think we're doing a real, as best job as we can in anticipating growth, catching up where we've been lacking in several years. And even before discussions of annexation were starting to occur, the utility service board that I've been a part of for a while, we've been talking and asking for a cost of services study. For how long? I mean, for a long time because it just didn't make sense with what we were doing. We increased hookup fees because they were seriously underpriced, particularly when you're adding multifamily structures. So, so once you see all that, then you have to increase those costs because that's what it costs. I mean, it's the cost of service, that's what we're saying. So hopefully, if in fact there is some annexation or something that comes into the city, then that will hopefully spur more density, which will help ameliorate the cost and thus bring some revenue as part of the city so we can keep our infrastructure up. See, and that's it. We're focusing on some things and rightfully so. But let's think about the pipes, it's got to get it from here to there. The pipes that go from here to where the city property ends and then what it takes to move from there on out further. And I think we did the best job we could to make sure that all common services were kept that way, common services. And I guess we really could have just said across the board 5%. It would kind of reach the same thing. It's not fair. It's not part of the cost of services study. And I think that's where you get the differential there. So many of the questions that my colleagues asked tonight and we've asked previously, and I think staff here can know that, that many of people on the utility service board and myself, even another city lays on, has asked some of the same questions. In fact, I've warned them that they probably ought to be real prepared when they come here because my colleagues will in fact do what we've done tonight, which is to be as thorough as we can. And, and so I appreciate the presentation. I will support this. And one last thing, we talk about this as part of legislation. I want folks to understand in many cases that when we do these increases, I pay those increases too. Okay? And I don't like it. But I'm more concerned, not with an individual rate increase, but, and as I've talked with several folks, we might do a little increase here and a little increase there and, you know, and everybody's just a little, well ultimately us folks is paying the bill, that, that increase starts to add up. So I'm kind of looking at it more, in a more broader picture, if you will, from an equitable, equity standpoint. But the bottom line is, water source, infrastructure, growth just has to be done and I wish we'd have done it sooner than later. So, and I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sturbaum?
So I guess I have one more question and that's, I get that individuals within the city would pay either three or 5%. That's not a big difference. But who are the big users? Who would be more subject to benefit and loss in this change? Are there very large users of sewer and that have large, large bills that this will affect disproportionately?
Well, our largest customer is Indiana University.
Right.
So in, in, our, I'm sorry, our largest customer is Indiana University.
Right.
And by far. So we sent letters to our largest, specifically sent letters regarding this change to our 30 largest customers a couple of weeks ago to let them know about this. You know, we're proposing to have it go into effect at the first of the year, but you know, we have reached out and given additional information to the largest customers, but the customer that, that pays the most is IU. There are some large, other large customers inside the city. Some of those are, are, someone mentioned apartment buildings where, where the, the water bill and the sewer bill is included in the rent. In those cases, they don't separately meter each of the, each of the apartments, so those can be pretty large. The mall is pretty large and so forth.
Right. What about the large county users?
Large county users, I guess, are large industrial users in the county, so those would be mostly on the west side.
Right. So the large city users would all rather go 3% than 5%, I would expect.
Certainly, yes. I would think so.
Okay, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. I kind of like insurance that spreads it all across everybody in some ways, so I'm just going to think about that. Because it, it seems to affect some people disproportionately. But it may be just, it may be a just effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollin?
To respond to Councilmember Sims for a minute, this is the first time in the history of our utility that we, city residents, will not be paying the same amount as non-city residents. So it's not true that we're going to pay the same bill. So I think that's a fair, that's what I heard. But I do think that it, it's a legitimate question what people who don't live in the city raised. And so I want to address it. I like to say a lot that the word city, the word town, the word village, municipalities of any kind do not appear in the constitution, but the word state appears in the name of the country, here in the United States. Each state has a sovereignty and cities as corporate entities only exist with the permission of the state. So, you know, even though humans don't spread evenly across the landscape because humans clustered together, every state has laws that, you know, deal with municipalities and what they are and aren't allowed to do, but we are subject to their jurisdiction. What I really heard from members of the public speaking about it who don't live in the city, you know, the, we, we could say those lines are arbitrarily drawn, but I agree that they're not arbitrarily drawn. That they're drawn based on density, that when a place densifies, it eventually gets to a certain density that it makes sense for it to be under municipal jurisdiction. But what the public commentators are really arguing for is a kind of thing you only see in countries like Canada where you have metropolitan management, where you don't have, I mean, I'm from Lake County, there are 27 different municipalities in Lake County. Here there's Bloomington, Elsville and Steinsville. And Bloomington's the only city in the county. So we're kind of used to the city and the county being similar sized governments and the city dominating the county population. But, you know, like only, the only way it will be fair to everybody is if we had essentially Unigov. That's not going to happen anytime soon. The state hasn't been fond of Unigov ever since it passed in the 70s. So, you know, based on the presentation, I just think that it's baseless, that this is somehow unfair, I think, to non, non-city residents. I think that the utilities department did a really good job of presenting the logic behind it. Not the least of which is, even if we did want to somehow rate areas of the city according to its density, state law doesn't allow it. And so it's the kind of thing that I would urge residents of the county to take up with the state. I mean, essentially, they did that with the annexation action that they took, which I still consider to be illegal. But at, at least it started the conversation, however negatively. But that's really, you know, only the state can make that final decision as to how municipalities should be governed. Until then, I think that what we're doing is very much par for the course, it's very standard. I think it's about time that we are identifying higher costs outside city limits. The principle is, the farther away you go, the more geometrically the costs go up. You know, it's not to say that there aren't some sparse areas of the city. There are some very arbitrary annexations, but overall, the general line around the city, I think, is where it should be for now and the lines that we're thinking about adding are not entirely inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Finally, I will just say again my thanks to Mr. Lotson, Ms. Wilson for, from Crow. It is really important whenever we're talking about any kind of an increase to have that, that study of the cost of services. That was very, very enlightening and I think it helped all of us up here see the value in this. And also thank you to Mr. Kelson and your, your staff for, again, thinking ahead and working on these things in an incremental fashion. I will be in support. And if there are no further comments from council, let me s-
Sorry, yeah, move, do pass.
Move, do pass and second. Let me start on my right with Ms. Chopra.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Seven, zero, one.
Seven, zero, one. Thank you very much. And we're right back to our last item for this evening and that's ordinance 19-17 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code titled wastewater by amending that regarding connection fees to allow waiver of these fees in two limited circumstances to promote conversion of septic to sewer and to complement certain city affordable housing programs. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Chris Wheeler and I'm with City Legal. Before us this evening is ordinance 1917. And I don't know how rare it is, but it is a circumstance where the city-
If you can just pull your mic a little bit closer, some of us are having a hard time hearing you.
I'll have to move closer to the podium, I think.
There you go. It does move. You can bring it forward.
This is a, to me at least, a rare circumstance for me to be able to come before the council or any board and make a recommendation for staff that would provide less cost to our users. We have an ordinance in place for connection fees that's been around since I believe 1994 that requires the city utility for wastewater to charge a connection fee for all new connections. It's a shall and not a may. We are obligated to charge that fee regardless of the customer or the circumstances that the customer might face or the cost that that connection fee might be. However, having said that, our utility recognizes a couple of programs in the city that we believe would benefit greatly from an amendment to this ordinance that would allow for some very limited circumstances for an exception to be made by way of a waiver. Those two exceptions would be for, in the first instance, for application that is made by the hand department asking that a waiver occur in instances where there is affordable housing going on for single-family residents. The definition that would be used for this would be derived by hand using the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's guidelines. So that's one exception where we believe that it would benefit the development of affordable housing, which is one of the mayor's programs and is highly desired by the executive office. And we would like to facilitate that where we can and this is an instance where we could do that. The other application for waiver would be for real property owners within the city limits, owners of real property located within city limits who desire to abandon an existing septic system in order to then connect to our sewer systems or to otherwise protect our municipal separate stormwater sewer system, which is to say, to protect the outflow of any negative impact into our lakes, streams and other drinking waters. We believe that a properly functioning septic system works very well, but you have to rely upon each individual property owner's desire to actually properly maintain that system and to determine when it is time to abandon that system. We would like to provide economic incentive and encouragement to those within the city limits who have the ability to connect to a sewer system, to do so sooner rather than later by waiving that connection fee. So in those two limited circumstances, we would propose to this board, to this council, an amendment to Bloomington Municipal Code 10.08.140 to provide for those two limited exceptions to the connection fee. We have Doris Sims here this evening who can answer any questions with regards to the- Municipal Code 10.08.140 to provide for those two limited exceptions to the connection fee. We have Doris Sims here this evening, who can answer any questions with regards to the exception for affordable housing. And we also have members of staff from CBU who can answer any questions that might relate to the other waiver for septic systems. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And first question, Mr. Sturbaum.
Yeah, connection waiver, is that only in the city, not the county?
No, I don't believe that it is geographically restricted, because if we find, we, if the director of utilities find that abandoning a septic system to connect to a closely-located sewer system, our sewer system, if he finds that that would protect our MS4, then that waiver, if applied for, is something that the director would have the ability to grant.
So, would those waivers be in certain affordable areas where they're trying to encourage people to convert to sewer, or not? Do you have an idea of how it would be used and where?
I'm sorry, now you're going to affordable housing?
No, I'm talking about septic connection, and would you, would you look at an income area for that waiver fee to encourage a larger number to connect to a sewer rather than septic?
Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. For the purpose of the septic tank waiver proposal, and it's, it would be to allow us to have the discretion to waive a connection fee for someone who's replacing a septic tank. The reason for that is that it benefits the MS4, the municipal separate storm sewer system. So, one of the vehicles that we've talked about for implementing this is that since it benefits the MS4, that the MS4 could reimburse the sewer utility for the lost revenue. That would be one mechanism for implementing it, because really what we're doing by doing this is saving water, or, sorry, saving money for the stormwater program. So, the reason for it isn't about the cost of building a home. Most of the septic tanks that lie within the city are in, are associated with much older developments, and so, those tend to be lower-income neighborhoods, but it's not, it's not directly connected to any particular economic program.
But don't you often extend a line, and then not enough people want to hook on, and this could be an incentive?
It certainly could be an incentive, certainly, because the connection fee is around $2,800. So, the cost of getting sewer in a neighborhood that doesn't have it, it's the cost of the sewer main, it's the cost of the sewer lateral that goes from the main to your home, and it's the cost of the connection fee. So, in most cases, those first two costs are larger than the connection fee, but this certainly would incentivize connections, especially in denser neighborhoods where people are on septic. And there's, there are a number of them in the city. As far as outside the city, Chris alluded to the possibility that waivers for the MS4 program might be granted to customers outside the city, but they don't pay our stormwater fee. They pay the county's stormwater fee. So, it would be if we wanted to incentivize, you know, to work with our county partners to incentivize outside, if we execute this program by having the MS4 reimburse, then the counties, the county could have a replacement program where they would, could offset part of the connection fee.
I don't know what MS4 is.
Municipal separate storm sewer system.
Okay.
Ditches, it's the-
Sounds like some English secret agent.
Storm, it's the storm ditches, storm drains, called, you know, storm pipes, inlets, so forth.
So, how is that all connected? I don't get why the stormwater is connected to the sewer hookup.
Because when a septic tank fails, raw sewage gets into, gets into, flows across the landscape or through the subsurface into streams and into drainage ditches.
Yes, that's bad.
Huh?
That's bad.
And that's bad, yes. So, the purpose of it is to help keep our, keep our stormwater program, help us with surface water quality in the city and leaving the city. And we could work with, presumably work with county partners to have them execute a similar program outside.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I wanted to ask for clarification of the response given to Councilmember Sturbaum in the ordinance language for both the waiver for affordable housing and the waiver for a resident abandoning a septic system. It says within the city limits. Am I-
Yes, it does.
Is reading that?
That might, I had thought it was for both, but if, for the, for the affordable housing waiver, it's all inside the city limits, and we had talked about it both ways for the MS4 or the septic tank waiver, but I guess the final version of the language had it inside the city. I apologize for that.
And certainly, if this council wishes to make that clearer, the last clause of subsection B talks about "or to otherwise protect the municipal separate storm sewer system," and the way I interpret that means that if somebody from outside of the city were to apply because their septic system is failing, and the director determined that allowing them to hook up without the connection fee in order to encourage them to abandon that septic system would in fact protect the storm system, stormwater system, then that would be an opportunity for a waiver to be granted. So, it's not limited strictly to inside the city.
But it says that it, the application for a waiver by an owner of real property which is located within the city limits of the city of Bloomington.
Correct, and then I'm reading-
So, it can be somebody who owns a property in the city, but they're talking about a property outside the city to get the waiver? That doesn't make any sense.
I don't read the, with the "or" at the end, or the application being provided, or someone who's applying outside the city who the director would determine that the abandonment of the septic system would protect the MS4. So, the "or" clause does not have the specific language for requiring city-owned real estate. We can, we can clarify and amend the language-
I would.
If that's what the council wishes. Certainly, if there's confusion, then it seems to me we should change the language.
Yeah, if the intention is to allow it for properties that are actually located outside the city, I think that needs to be more clear in the language.
Certainly.
I had one other question. So, the ordinance says this would be at the discretion of the director. So, that, that makes me a little uncomfortable. That sounds like, you know, hey, if it's my buddy, then yes, and if it's somebody that's my arch enemy, then no. I mean, not that you would do that, but I don't like that wiggle room.
Well, the reason that the language, and we've got a lot of things that are done that way, that have, where there's discretion, the discretion to the utility, if the, if the utility makes a determination, then the director signs off on it. In some cases, if it's, if it's an issue that's important enough, then we go to our board and ask them to, you know, to weigh in on it as well. In this case, we would be, the notion is that all the legislation that's before you does is offer us the, the ability to issue a waiver if the circumstances are warranted according to the, to the rules in the, in the legislation. We still have to implement the process for that. And if someone failed to execute the process, then they wouldn't be eligible for the waiver necessarily because they had failed to execute the process properly. So, the detailed implementation of it would be done by our staff, working with our board. All that council is saying is, it's okay with us if you waive this fee in these special circumstances, but it's up, but then we would work with our board to determine how that was actually done.
Okay, so it's not just ask Vic and he'll say yes or no?
No, it's not just ask Vic.
It's a process.
Yeah, there's a process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollin?
Mr. Kelson, I think, or, well, Mr. Wheeler, I'd like to emphasize what Councilmember Piedmont Smith made as well, and that is that I, I see this as having real impact in utility on, outside the city, particularly in the Lake Monroe watershed. I don't know its feasibility. I suppose, again, Mr. Kelson, it has to do with whether residences are close by a sewer, a sanitary sewer within, exactly, is that correct?
Yes.
Obviously.
You, you, well, there's two parts to that. One is if there's a sewer near you, you always have the option. But if you're on septic, the, the rule is that, and this is a health department, if you have a septic tank that fails and your property, your home is within 300 feet of a sewer, you must connect to the sewer. They will, they will not give you a permit for a new septic tank.
But that must be complaint-driven, right? I mean, how often does, I mean, does health department, how would you know if a, if a, if a septic fails? Many, I've seen them fail in the county, and it goes unnoticed for a long, long time.
Yeah, it can go unnoticed for a long time. But, but, but the, the execution of it, I think you started to ask about the execution of that. As I said, you know, we recognize that, that our county partners also have a stormwater utility. So, if we were, you know, one way to implement this would be to have the stormwater utilities for city and county, you know, fund the, fund the waivers, basically. And it may be that the county would say, well, we're only going to pay half, or something like that, but it would allow them the ability to do that as well, if the language allows it for outs, for outside customers. So, but it's a matter of how we implement it.
Okay, I was thinking about something we talked about during budget, which was that you were, part of the appropriations room utilities was for a gauge on the north fork of the Salt Creek, right?
South Fork.
South Fork, okay, pardon me. South Fork of, of Salt Creek. And would that be able to determine if it was receiving sewer overflow as opposed to agricultural runoff, or would we need something more refined? I've heard of a super gauge where you can have, where you monitor much more in terms of specificity. In other words, I'm trying to get to the inputs of what's affecting our lake and whether this has utility in terms of addressing that.
So, the, the location that's been recommended for the super gauge is actually taking flow mostly from a different county. So, it really wouldn't be affected by this legislation at all. That said, there are certain, certainly areas in the county that, where they have a stormwater utility, and there may or may not be sewer nearby, where, where they could get people off of septic if there were, if there are a way to provide the service out there.
Okay.
And that would, of course, help Lake Monroe.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is for Mr. Kelson. Do we have a sense of how many septics are in the city limits?
I don't know.
Septic systems?
I don't know the number of septic tanks that are in the city. The estimates vary. It's not a huge number. I do know that in the past two years, respectively, we've had three new sewer connections for people who are abandoning septic tanks. In one, in 2017, we had eight in 2018. So, it's not, it's not a huge economic impact on us. One expects that that would probably be the going rate of how fast they would, they would be, and based on the availability of sewer and so forth. However, as you may know, CBU and Hand have been working together with a project that is largely grant-funded by Hand to build a new sewer that serves the Broadview neighborhood, portion of the Broadview neighborhood over on Ralston Drive. We have had, we have a number of customers who are excited, water customers, obviously, but a number of residents there who are excited about the prospect of being able to get away from their septic tanks and connect to that, that new sewer that's going in. So, that's one neighborhood that might benefit from the septic tank waiver.
Sure. Thank you. My other question was for Ms. Sims, and I'm just wondering if the guidelines have been established, and if you could share those for the waivers.
Doris Sims, Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development. So, this is not a new program for Hand Utilities. In fact, it's been going on for 20 years, that an application is made for the first part of it, where an applicant, particularly a non-for-profit developer like Habitat for Humanity, fills out a simple application, and we review it, and we make the determination that, yes, it's a nonprofit developer, and the housing that they're developing is going to go for low-income people. We pass that on to Utilities, and then they do the waiver. It just came to our attention within the last year that that hadn't been codified, and so, that's why it's coming to you tonight. But we have been doing it all along for Habitat for Humanity, when Bloomington Restorations were building housing, we did it for Bloomington Restoration, Bloomington Restoration. So, that part, a part A, is not new. And then, as Vic just mentioned, one of the things that we do in cooperation with Utilities Department is that we go into areas of the city that still have septic systems, and we put in sewer. That, we're right now working within cooperation to put sewers in streets in Broadview where that a lot of the residents still have septic systems with our community development block grant dollars. But what we cannot pay for is hook-on fees. The federal government does not allow us to do that. So, we came to Utilities with those residents and say, is there any way that you can help them that we're putting sewers in, we're putting in the laterals, we're putting in the lift station, everything's going in, but in order to hook onto the sewer, it is that hook-on fee of $2,300 that a lot of those low-income residents cannot afford. And so, that's why there's part A and part B to this amendment for, before you tonight.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? And seeing none, do we have any public comment this evening with respect to this? Please feel free to approach the podium, state your name, and sign in, please. And if there's anyone else, and you want to kind of queue up, we will welcome your comment. You see the sign-up sheet there?
Yeah, there's the sign-up sheet, there's no pen.
Oh.
I don't have a pen. I'll sign in in just a minute. Hi, I'm Lindsay Brown.
Thank you so much.
I'm a resident in, in Broadview on Ralston Drive, and I'm impacted by the city line that was installed recently. Myself and other neighbors on the street cannot afford this fee, $2,800. I went to the City Utilities Department myself to ask about it, because I'm very interested in having, having the city line installed, because I'm not familiar with septic. I grew up in a neighborhood that didn't have septic, so I've been grappling with how to deal with this tank in my backyard. And so, it would be very helpful to have this waiver in place. When I talked to the department, they said that they're working on getting this resolved and a waiver in place for us, and that was very exciting to hear, but it had to pass through the council first. So, I'm advocating for myself and my neighbors who have also mentioned that they can't afford this fee as well. Thank you.
Additional comments?
I'll give you your pen back when we're done. I'm Denise Valkyrie. I'm the president of the Broadview Neighborhood Association and precinct committee member for precinct five there as well. And I told people that I'd be here representing them and their comments. I'm grateful to Hand for helping Habitat for Humanity connect to the sewers. I live in a Habitat for Humanity home in this neighborhood myself. I've lived in the county and experienced septic failure, and the grass does grow greener, but I couldn't let my children play in the yard. So, I couldn't keep my pets in the yard either. The people that I've spoken to in my neighborhood have asked me to pass along that they really hope that these fees are waived, because otherwise they couldn't afford to connect to the sewer system. Our neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods that have been used as an example of affordable living. It would push some of these people out because they wouldn't be able to connect when their septics failed. That's about all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public this evening? Anyone else from the public this evening? Seems like all the commenters are over here to this side tonight.
No.
No, no, take your time.
My name's Neil Heidler, and I'm also a resident of the Broadview neighborhood. I live on Milton Drive. And I just, you know, I'm looking, very much looking forward to connecting to the new city sewer that's running behind my house. I'd just say that the reality for me is that we're, it's $2,300, I think, is the fee. Is that right? Yeah. Well, we're looking at that, just, I just wanted to throw out some numbers, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, which is, I have a, it's been called a cistern. I'll have to pump it out, I'll have to fill it with fill, which, and it's in a very awkward location, so this is going to be a very labor-intensive, possibly expensive process. It's a large tank, and then I'll have to pay for the plumbing to the outside of the house and dig a trench back there. And I was trying to get an estimate for this work just before I went on vacation at the end of August, and failed to do that, but I just, I'm guessing that the total cost will be in the $10,000 area for me, and that's, you know, significant hardship. And, so, but I think it's, you know, this just sounds like a very, you know, good, solid concept for the community and for, you know, just improving the environmental quality, and the, you know, right, quality of the runoff that's going to Lake Monroe and so on. So, it just seems like a really, you know, great idea to allow this waiver. And, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we are back to council for our final comment. Councilmember Rallo had his hand up first.
Thank you. I think this is a fantastic idea, and I, I thank Ms. Sims for advocating to that, to Mr. Kelson and his board to incorporate this. I, I think that for low-income residents, it's, it's very, very important. I'm also very much in favor of trying to determine where the point sources for runoff are for, that are affecting lake quality. I know that's going to be a long process, but I think that this could be part of the, the answer to it, at least one, one part of it. And so, the sooner we can expedite this, the better. There's much more work to do, but I'm totally in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I, I too am in favor. But I would like to encourage Mr. Kelson to work with our county partners to encourage the abandonment of septic tanks, because I think that would be better for everyone. And to encourage Mr. Wheeler to clarify Section 2, I don't even see him, oh, there he is, Section 2 Subsection B, because it, it is confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
And thanks to staff for the presentation. I'm glad that we are able to consider this, and particularly from the, from codifying some of the rules and some of the things that we've done in the past. And I think many of us already know that some of the habitat housing projects, and then some of the individual houses, that those hookups were already waived as part of the affordability plan. So I'm glad to really, that we're codifying that. And obviously, it's a good municipality move, dealing with failed septics, or folks that we really want to help control that waste stream. I think we will be able to, or I will be able to support this. But one other point that I really wanted to make, and I've heard the mention of $2,800 for hookup, well, this is the result of one of our first discussions on cost of study analysis, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, those hookup fees used to be about $750, when it really cost us a lot more to do. So, I know there's some cost increases, but they're necessary for maintenance and how we operate. But these are the things when we ask for cost of study analysis, that we hope to show up, that, that it's actually, the city is doing it for this amount, which is many times less than what it actually cost. And, so, and I think that's, it's a good ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council wish to make a comment before we, uh, Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea, and I know Broadview's waited a long time, and this is an excellent step, and going even farther to make it easy to hook those sewers up. I think maybe we should do a little clarification of the language, so that we're more free to do county cooperation, and it's hard to anticipate, but it's pretty easy to know when something's failing and someone needs help, and to not be bound, so that you can't be flexible. That, there probably is some language to be added. But for all the Broadview residents, thank you for this, and for the future hook-ons that need to happen. Thank you for this. And for the affordable housing work. That's, that's great.
All right. Anyone else?
Second.
All right. Let me start to my right with Councilmember Rallo.
That's your left.
Your left.
On the right.
Which hand is this? I don't know. It's sleep deprivation. I'm also on the plan commission. You'll have to excuse me.
My turn?
Yes.
All right. Wait, start over. No.
Please, yes.
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 And that's unanimous. Eight, zero. Thank you to everyone, and that concludes our business for this evening. We have a motion to adjourn. Yes.
No need, you can call it.
Two. We're done.